Passes. Good to see everybody this morning, or morning, whoa, wait a minute. Good to see everybody this afternoon. At this time, we'll call to order a special session. And the City Council of Landpasses, Texas will meet in a closed executive session pursuant to the Texas Government Code, Chapter 551, as follows. Section 551, oh, seven, four, personnel matters to deliberate the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment duties of city manager and other personnel matters as allowed by the Texas Government Code, Chapter 551. Consultant with an attorney by telephone as or in person concerning matters upon which the attorney has a duty and/or responsibilities to report to government.
Move to adjourn to executive session.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Session at this time. And we will find a motion, we'll adjourn the special session. All in favor?
Aye.
And we will call to order our workshop session. And first item up is discussion and presentation of our annual racial profiling report. Chief Cummins.
Mayor, Council, good evening. Appreciate a few moments to visit with you about our annual racial profiling report. Racial profiling report is almost twenty-five years old. In around two thousand and one, it was introduced by the legislations, then tweaked twice, and what we've got now is a pretty good system. Specifically, the law prohibits police officers in the state of Texas from participating in its operation profiling. We must adopt a written policy in every law enforcement agency. Our officers must report all of their traffic stop data to us at the police department. And our agencies, we must collect this data, and we must submit an annual report to the state of Texas and to our governing body, which is y'all. And I'm happy to say that the Landpasses Police Department has done all these things. We've compiled our annual report, we've collected, we've audited, and we've submitted our report to the state, and it's in your back tonight, and I'm presenting it to you as we speak. There's just a couple of main topics, and your report is actually fifteen pages. It's a primary report, which is seven, and there's eight analysis pages towards the end of. And the main categories, though, is the total stops, where they were at, did we know the ethnicity or the race of the person prior to the stop, and what was that race and ethnicity? The gender of the person stopped, why did we stop? Did we search? If we searched, what did we find? And why was the reason we even asked to search? And what was it we found? What happened with that stop? Was there a citation, a warning? Was there an arrest? If we made an arrest, why did we arrest? Did we have to use any physical force to effect that arrest? And then if we had any racial profiling complaints throughout the year. So there's just a few numbers of those fifteen, of those fifteen pages of numbers I'd like to mention to you. We had four thousand and sixty-one traffic stops this year by our patrol officers. We searched a hundred and sixty-one times. We discovered contraband in eighty-seven of those situations. We issued two thousand eight hundred and eighty-one warnings, one thousand and twenty-two citations, and we made ninety-one arrests off of those traffic stops. We only used physical force in one traffic stop to affect one of those ninety-one arrests. And of the people that were stopped on the analysis side, the second part of the report I was mentioning to you, whites or Caucasians were sixty-seven percent of the time the ethnicity that was identified or reported to us. Hispanics were number two, at twenty-four percent roughly. Blacks or African-American was almost six percent. Asian Pacific Islanders were two point three-nine percent. And coming in at the bottom was our Alaskan and Native Americans at a third of a percent for those that were stopped on traffic stops. So this is only a small portion of those numbers, and in the analysis report, if you actually wanted to look, you can see where all of these numbers are dissected, dissected again down to the end. For instance, how many female, ask, Alaskan, Native Americans were stopped? Was it a state highway? Was it a side street? You know, you, there's all kinds of information. So with that said, what do we do with this information, is how does it pertain to our city? Well, it's tricky, because it's hard to compare apples to apples. For instance, we're like a lot of the cities immediately to our south our size, not exactly. Our highways are different. We've got a large military base that is very diverse right next to us. A lot of these other places don't. Some are closer to a larger metropolitan area. We're not. Some have a lot more industry, unlike us. But we've got to have somewhere to start and do something with this data once we collect it, you know, at the end of the year. So I can tell you, for me as the police chief, and then those that work with me and our records clerk, we don't just wait till the end of the year. Our records clerk looks at these daily, weekly, monthly, runs this report, reruns it next month, is always looking for any part of this data that looks weird. Do we make any just mechanical errors? Or do we have an issue in the house where somebody is doing something either on purpose or by accident, spewing our data? But at the end of the year, we have looked at this, our records clerk's looked at it, our numbers are pretty close to what they are every year, and again, we've been doing this for almost twenty-five years now. And I don't see anything that looks out of line based on the part on the right, the analysis report, we just generally look at the makeup of our community. But mind you, these traffic stops are people passing through all the time. It's not just our local community that is in baseball. So it looks like to me it's pretty well in line. So I don't see any issues. It looks okay. We've had zero complaints, and nothing throughout the year looked like it was a problem. I think it's great that we do this. I remember when it first came out, everybody thought it was a huge discomfort to have to go through all this, but over time, we've got a good system. It's not that difficult with modern technology. They collect this most of the time digitally, they issue these citations. If it's a manual citation, they complete it on the back. Again, we do it as we go, and at the end of the year, I think it does two things. If someone was to think that maybe they themselves or a particular segment of our society was being picked on, we have all this data where we can come in and say, here it is, let's look at it together. I'm no expert, I've got a pretty good general knowledge, but we can do what we want with it and have somebody outside look at this and see if they are. On the other side, the police perspective, all our police officers know that we collect all this data. So you'd be foolish to go do anything that you shouldn't do specifically against the law into purposely racial profiling anymore. So it keeps both sides honest. And so I think it's a good idea, we have a good system, I'm glad we do it, and that's our report for the year. Be glad to answer any questions for y'all now, later, throughout the year, if you ever have any questions, because it is an important thing. We need to make sure we're doing things right, we're doing things fair.
Any questions for Chief?
Four thousand sixty-one stops, is that a lot? To you, to you, the final question.
Councilman Hader, I, you know, lots of, you know, very term there to someone. For us, no, sir, it's up a little bit, I think about three or four hundred from last year, but we've been a little closer to fully staff this year, plus we have a lot of young people we put through the academy that are working on their second, third years, and I think they're doing a little more work. That's just my guess. So I want to say I don't think it's a lot for our community.
And this number, every time a person is pulled over?
This is traffic stops only.
Okay, yeah, but, but this is every time somebody's pulled over, whether it's a warning, whether written or verbal, or a, a true citation, that is, it's four thousand sixty-one?
Yes, sir, and our policy is if we make a traffic stop, then something's going into right, a citation or a warning, and the only exception would be if there was an emergency call during that stop and they had to leave and not complete their work. So yes, every time there's a traffic stop, we collect all of this data and turn it in, do the best we can to get it right, check it regularly.
Any other questions? Thank you, Chief.
You bet, thank you all.
Discussion regarding any item on the regular agenda. And if there is none, we'll get a motion to adjourn our workshop session.
Remove.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
And at this time, our regular session, we will call it to order. All rise.
Bless you, Frank. Dear Heavenly Father, we're grateful you've been such a great community, such a great place surrounded by good people, our elected officials, our deployed city employees, and our good citizens. And the grace that you be with us tonight, let the information flow freely, and let good decisions be made. And thank you for everything you're doing for us, and we ask that you watch over the safety of the committee again, and as always, Jesus' name, amen.
One more thing, please.
Let's give allegiance to the fight on united saints of America and to the republic for which is sentenced, one nation under God and the principle of liberty and justice for all. Honor to Texas life, pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one in this.
At this time, we'll go into our public hearings and citizen's comments. Citizen's comment, any citizen who desires to address the City Council on a matter not included on the agenda? Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize. Presentation and proclamation. Mr. Mike? I apologize.
Thank you, Mayor Hader, peers, and council members. Uh, you have a proclamation before you for the declaring February to be Night Sky Month in Landpasses. It's been three years since you all passed a resolution expressing support for Night Sky improvement, preservation of our beautiful dark skies in Landpasses, and we thank you for that. Last year, you approved a resolution making February Night Sky Month and the jewel in that month. This year will be on March first. It's the Dark Sky event that we have at the Old Middle School Gym. Last year was our first time, it was a big success. It's a family-friendly event, we had a whole lot of kids there, we had a lot of nonprofits there talking about what they do. So we appreciate your adding your weight to this month and to our efforts to preserve our night sky by being.
And at this time, I'm going to read a resolution declaring February twenty-twenty-five Night Sky Awareness Month for the City of Landpasses. Whereas the City of Landpasses here at City supports efforts to preserve the night sky and encourage such practices and technologies to further preserve, protect, and celebrate our night sky in the city as it is reflected in this resolution. Whereas the city works with its partners to educate, encourage landowners, business, resident communities, and public entities to join in this commitment. Whereas upcoming events raises awareness included in the March first, twenty-twenty-five, Stars at the Night Sky Party at Landpasses Middle School Cafeteria. Whereas the city recognizes the importance of education and awareness building to continue and to encourage our citizens in protecting the enduring beauty of the night sky. Now therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of Landpasses, Texas, that the city hereby declares February twenty-twenty-five Night Sky Awareness Month. This resolution shall take place immediately upon its passage, passed and adopted by the City Council on this thirteenth day of January twenty-twenty-five. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, now we can move on to citizen's comments. Any citizen who desires to address the City Council on a matter not included on the agenda may do so at this time. The City Council may not deliberate on items presented underneath this agenda. And we have none. One point two, citizen's comment, any citizen who desires to address the City Council on a matter that is included on this agenda may do so at this time. And we don't have anybody. One point three, public hearing to receive citizen's comment to consider approval, denial, or approval with modifications. To consider granted a rezone request for the Northington Creek Estates commonly known as twelve oh-six Mills Street and seventeen oh-five East Fourth Street. The seventy-nine acres was originally zoned as shown below in May twenty-twenty-three. Three point four-six acres to single-family attached SFA townhomes. Ten point one four-one acres to single-family residence, six SF six. Thirty-five point one nine-five acres to a single-family resident, eight SF eight. Twenty-nine point three-six oh acres to a single-family residence, ten SF ten. Two point one seven-five acres to commercial C. The new, the new zoning request is as follows. Rezone thirty-one point eight-one acres from a single-family resident, eight, and single-family residents, ten, agriculture, AG, green space detention, rezone portion of single-family residents, eight, and single-family residents, ten, to single-family attached townhomes, for a total of thirteen point four oh acres, a hundred and twenty-four lots. Rezone portion of single-family residents, eight, and single-family residents, ten, to single-family residents, six, for a total of thirty-two point five-two acres, a hundred and forty-five lots.
Thank you, Mayor, for going through that for me. But yes, that is exactly the proposed zoning versus what is currently zoned today. So if you look on page twenty-six, that does represent what is currently zoned, that was approved back in May of twenty-twenty-three. And then on page thirty-three, it does represent the current proposed zoning. I did include in your chapter report an example, not example, but a definition of the single-family townhomes as defined in our zoning rights. And that was located on page thirty-eight in your chapter report. I did also include the comprehensive plan in there for you to review as far as your suburban residential, suburban misuse, and portal commercial, so it does align with our comprehensive plan as far as the requested zoning. We get sent out notifications to property owners within two hundred feet of the property. We did receive six in opposition, and those letters are in our packet as well. The planning commission did meet on December twelfth, and regarding their actual recommendation, they could not get a majority to vote one way or the other. We had one where they voted to have less single-family townhomes and more than the SF six, and wanting more variety as far as your residential eights for the twelve hundred square foot homes versus the SF six, which is only the eleven, the thousand square foot homes. And then the other recommendation was to deny it altogether. So neither of them met the majority requirement, so that's why it's being addressed to you as an appeal from totally engineers. We do have Mr. Amelia Morales, who's a developer, as well as Hannah Wilberly in the audience, if you have any questions regarding the development. And I do believe you have some testimony from the audience members as well for the public hearing. Do you have any questions? I want to listen to testimony at this time.
Are we getting into testimony, or do we need to address drainage issues and all that with the developer? How do you all handle it?
Maybe we should hear testimony first?
Heard the testimony, I've heard that.
Yes. If we have somebody that would like to give us testimony in the audience?
Is it time to public, step up?
Yes.
Hello. Deputy Mayor and member of the City Council, my name is Betsy Kemp. I stand before you as a concerned homeowner and citizen of Landpasses. I am here to speak for my husband and I to voice our strong opposition to the proposed rezoning and new development plan for Northington Creek Estates in Landpasses. The revised proposal marks a drastic departure from the previously approved plan and raises serious concerns about density, infrastructure, environmental hazards, and traffic impacts. I'm going to talk about those four different items briefly. Density concerns. The original proposal had requested housing for three hundred and thirty-eight families plus four commercial spaces on ADA first. After negotiations with the Planning and Zoning Committee and local citizens, a revised less dense plan was approved. The approved plan reduced the density to two hundred and sixty-five families on ADA first, with a majority of SF eight and SF ten homes plus some townhomes, and that was the first plan we saw. That's the one that's in effect right now. This new proposal disregards the recommendations of the Planning and Zoning Committee. Instead of spacious, thoughtfully planned neighborhoods, the current proposal eliminates all SF eight and SF ten lots, reduces the housing area to forty-six acres, and introduces high-density tiny home lots, all of them SF six, and quadplex buildings, housing two hundred and sixty-nine families, which is actually over the amount of the one that has been approved. The current approved plan had emphasized larger lots to address the density concern, making this shift to smaller SF six lots and quadplexes totally unacceptable. High-density developments such as this often lead to poorly maintained rented properties, which can diminish the neighborhood quality and property values. Environmental hazards. The property proposed for this development is located in Basin. For forty years, we've lived here for forty years and, and looked at that field for forty years, we have witnessed drainage problems and days of sandy water on this property after rain events, and that is even without the addition of impervious cover, which is being claimed. Replacing natural vegetation with impervious surfaces will significantly worsen drainage issues, increasing surface runoff and flooding. The loss of natural ground cover will contribute to erosion during rain events. Additionally, this increased runoff will carry pollutants into Sulphur Creek and surrounding fields endangering the local ecosystem and water quality. Infrastructure challenges. Landpasses is already struggling with infrastructure limitations, primarily in water supply, sewage capacity, and electricity. This development would place an unsustainable burden on existing resources. Concerning water, where will the city source the additional water needed for this and other proposed subdivisions, as we know water's been a major issue this last year? Is there enough water available in the state of Texas, and at what cost to the taxpayers? Electricity, how will the city secure sufficient electricity for such a large development, and what are the anticipated costs to the taxpayers? The sewer system, I don't believe our current sewer system, sewage system, can handle the additional load of two hundred and sixty-nine homes, and I believe Sulphur Creek is incapable of accommodating the increased sewage and runoff from this development. This project will necessitate a significant financial investment in roads, schools, emergency responders, and all the other infrastructure costs needed for a huge housing development within the city limits, and at what cost to the taxpayers? Traffic impact. This development will conservatively add over four hundred vehicles daily to Fourth Street. This road is already overburdened, as Techstock has recently reported a day, average daily volume of six thousand five hundred and sixty vehicles near the post office per day. The entrance to the proposed development, which is located near one ninety bypass, Sepco, and, and the post office, and this is the main end, there's two entrances, but that's the main one, will further strain narrow, two-lane Fourth Street. With only two planned exits, both feeding onto Fourth Street, the resulting congestion will negatively impact emergency response times and overall citizen movement and accessibility. In conclusion, proceeding without detailed plans to address these challenges and not offering clear and transparent communication to the public is irresponsible. The zoning proposal fails to address the long-term consequences for Landpasses residents and the environment. Before any decisions are made, the city must provide detailed plans on how infrastructure challenges will be addressed and funded, conduct and share comprehensive economic impact studies related to this development, and engage in meaningful dialogue with citizens to prioritize the best interests of the community. The City of Landpasses has a responsibility to ensure sustainable growth that enhances the quality of life for current and future residents. For these reasons, we urge you to table this rezoning decision until the above concerns are fully resolved. Let's preserve the quality of life that makes Landpasses a desirable place to live. Thank you for your time and thoughtful consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Kemp. Mr. Elliott?
Mayor, Council, appreciate your time. I'm here as a owner of property that abuts the proposed development, and I echo the same concerns and some others along with Ms. Kemp, and I'm just here to voice my support for them.
Thank you.
My credit to, we're a landowner to the east of this property.
Talk into the mic a little bit.
We're to the east of this property. I have to agree with everything Ms. Kemp said. My main concern is the drainage of, of this property where they're showing the empty ponds. We've been here since seventy-one. I mean, all your water is, is full here. When they build this up, it's going to come over, over this way. If they do this, I feel like they have access to the Sulphur Creek. If they can go there with it, better off. They asked me for a, a easement coming across here. They sent me a drawing, an easement, and I, I turned them down. I told them, it's, you know, watch them do that. They went to forty-foot deep, twelve-foot deep, coming straight across our crossing, and I told them, no. But still looks like to me, if you show retention ponds, lots of retention ponds, that's where the water comes, is on us. And that's why I'm totally against this project. I think they need to go to the drawing board and come back and come to more set.
Sir, are you, let me ask you just one question. Are you totally, you're totally opposed to the project?
Yes.
As a strong?
Yes.
Now, okay. But not totally opposed to housing in general?
No, no, it's, it's their table, it's their property. As long as they do it, don't, don't penalize the taxpayers, the city. I'm not here telling them what they can do with their land or nothing. But when it affects a neighbor, which we're all neighbors in this city, we're all taxpayers. When it affects us, you know, I, that's why I'm against it.
Anyone else?
I'm just, I'm here to talk to a bigger issue related to this for me personally. I moved here in late nineties, never moved here. Is this supposed to live in Jamie Briggs's year? Literally, before Paul Wilberly founded a piece of a house on Second Street. So I'm not opposed to housing at all. And, I mean, Daryl was in here somewhere on the glasses, I mean, you know, he built thirty, forty, sixty houses right across the fence from me. And our rent town was like, isn't that awful? He offered to select to me twice, because at the time, he really didn't want to do it. Because at the time, he really didn't want to do it, if my memory serves. But the only reason for me to have bought that property then to prevent people from having a place to live. You know, I grew up in a neighborhood like that. We need development, we need houses. I don't know, Daryl, sixty, eighty percent of the people who live in those houses are from Lampassus?
I'd say it's probably less than that. Probably about fifty percent of people live there.
All right, so growth for us and for people coming in. And I'm seeking, because it'd be really easy to see the few people that have the property, all border that property, and go, I just, you know, I've been looking at the field forever, and I just don't want to look at that field. If that's really my idea. Most of these people, by the time the problem may need come along, I'm not going to leave here. I moved here to find a place to raise my children. I made a great decision, as I'm sure several other people did. And I would hope that someday my children can come back and enjoy the Lampassus that I did. Thirty years from now, Austin is going to be New York City. The growth is coming whether we want it or not. But the people on this committee and the people that serve after y'all are going to have a very strong say in what that looks like. And here's where I don't want to offend anybody. We either look like Copperstove, or we can look like George Shad. We can look like Liberty Hill, or we can look like Cedar Park. But the decisions that we make on just these kinds of projects are going to dictate that. They're going to dictate whether my Phillip family and children and grandchildren want to come back here. And I'm planting trees right now, I never appreciate the shade. But I hope my children can. I think y'all are sitting in a better place than you realize. You got Geico, you got Rex Johnson, you got Dean Tommy, you got, how many of you guys? You got a lot of people in this community that know how to build, know what to do, what not to. I don't know the first thing about the retention pond, I'm not sure that he did. But he built one behind me that has worked. He put sixty houses, there's been no problem. The whole time he's building us, like, that's going to be a problem. I'm just saying, y'all have people you can go out and reach and look at a project and make sure that it's the right number of houses, the right size. When it comes to housing, do we need it? Yes. Do we need ten thousand low-income houses right in town? We need them. I mean, I'm a physician, I take care of low-income people all the time. There's plenty of room in this county. And I think you put the courthouse at the center of this community, and you put the schools, and you put the churches and the fire department, police department, you build out from there. And I think you have to protect the history of this town, the essence of this town, from that courthouse out. And I think the development, and I don't know anything about development, but I know when I go a place and it looks right, and I go to Portland in Maine, it looks right, you know, and there's houses there that somebody two hundred and fifty years ago decided, we need to preserve some of this now or we're going to lose it. And so, my prayer to y'all and my hope for y'all, I'm keeping this real, is that this doesn't just affect those people going around that house, it affects everybody in this community. You know, I've put money in the redevelopment projects in Austin. Tom Burns, I don't know if y'all know, he has a big development company, he's the worst business after forever. And he did very well. I don't know about the impact that those, you know, six hundred unit, two thousand unit condominiums were having on that area. It's just an investment for them. And as we move forward, there is going to be more and more people coming here wanting to build five hundred houses, six hundred houses. And at some point, the people, you guys and your support people, have got to look at that and go, is it right? We want the taxes, we certainly want the money, we want the taxes, we want the economy, we want it to grow the right way. And so I would just say, go pause, go to your people. Y'all all have access to those people that know more about this than I do. I don't come to meetings, I don't know what you're talking about this. But y'all have access to those people that can look at that and say, this looks okay. And I think if you do that, the people that you've got in here that don't like what it looks now will like what it looks like. Last time I spoke at this work is at the beginning of twenty twenty, and the COVID, my habits have changed. Good luck to y'all. Thanks for listening.
Thank you, Dr. Kane. Anyone else?
Good evening, Council. I appreciate y'all having me. My name's Emilio Peralos. I'm one of the developers on this property. And last year, we did, or two thousand twenty-three, we did go to planning and zoning. And I think it was there at that meeting that it got pointed out to us by some of the owners around that there was a lot of water that shed onto that property. And so, we kind of went back and looked, even after we got the zoning approved, of, okay, how can we make this a better piece of property? Without having to bring in an enormous amount of fill and then running the water down, maybe faster or harder. We did go, I think, to Mr. Richardson and asked him if we could get an easement through that property. So instead, what we did was, we minimized the footprint and created, I think, thirty-one point eight acres of ag space that will have our pond on there to hold the water on our property, as well as have property available for park and rent. We decided to go with townhomes as well. And the number hasn't changed too much, is only because that is really affordable housing for people right now. And we're doing the same thing kind of in the Temple market. And I'm able to offer a product to a single mom or a parent couple. They had the downsides already from owning a ranch or something and want a smaller footprint. Stuff starting possibly in the high one-fifties to the two-twenty's. And because you're talking about each one of those spaces is for a single family. It's not, yes, we might have some developer, investors come in and say, hey, I want to buy. But it's going to be more expensive than if they went and bought a duplex somewhere else. But for us, if we can do this, I think it does open up the door for good quality, affordable housing that's governed by an HOA and will, you know, keep up with the water on the property. And it'll be, we can't release, by law, we can't release more water than what's already going on to the neighboring properties. And so, we're prepared for that. And I wanted to come back to y'all last year, but last year I got a little upset. And so, but I'm doing that stuff now. And so, we wanted to get back and come and see y'all. But planning and zoning was having a little tough time. And so, they said, hey, you're best going off to the council and talking to the council. I did bring Mr. Wibley here from Turner Associates, Kendall. So if anybody has a specific engineering question, that's his line. And hopefully, he can answer it. But when we're talking this property, we're not talking about putting every lot on the ground a hundred percent. There's no way. It would be phased out and in time. You know, the system would keep up, we'd keep up with the system, and the system would be able to keep up with us. And so, you got to think that.
I'll just briefly go through this. I kind of went back to the numbers, just comparing the old layout versus the new layout. And actually, I mean, if you look at the footprint size, I mean, it's like about half the roads that are going to be between the first one and the new one. So the drainage would actually improve probably quite a bit, just because there's not as much road being built. And they're saying, they've got the same number of lots, it'll probably be the same when you file a product. And then the environmental impact is also going to be better, just because it's less footprint of roads being built.
Now, stop here a quick. You said that drainage will probably get better?
Yeah, I mean, well, I mean, I haven't done the full analysis to know. I mean, if you look at three thousand square foot per house, the number of lots, three thousand times the number of lots, plus the amount of roads, you can just kind of tell, if half the amount of roads, same number of houses, it's going to get better.
One of the issues I have is that when you were currently zoned, one of the things was, they wanted bigger lots, so you had some more variety. And so, it's like you took half the land and shoved just as many houses on it. And so, I don't think that that's staying with the concept of having the S at the eights and the tens. You're just doing all the sixes and the little bitty things, so you can get just as many houses and half the land.
Right, well, I mean, we wanted to address the drainage concern as the main priority of that. And that's, we need that acreage in the back to be able to address that drainage concern and have it go out to Sulfur Creek instead of draining through the Richardson property that you've already had before.
And I understand that, but, I mean, the drainage concern definitely needs to be, had to be addressed. But going backwards to what, when originally, when it was done, it was all SF six and the connected stuff, and that didn't pass. And so, the compromise was, which I'll have. And so, I don't understand why you don't still have that same mix of houses and the less amount of land.
Well, we know there's a big amount of lots at that point.
Right.
It would be as financial.
Right, but just because it's more financially. I mean, I understand you're looking at it from a finance aspect, but we need to look at it from what fits town.
And what allowances do we have for student enrollment increasing? Are we allowing any concessions out there for the school or anything like that? Have y'all talked to the school about this? Presented that to the school?
Yeah.
I've got a couple of concerns. One, I want to go back to what Councilor Morrison, when you said drainage probably will increase, probably is not going to do as much good at all. Because if it doesn't, then we've got a whole lot of mad residents. But I also wanted to address, you said a lot of this is going to be affordable housing, right?
Yes.
Affordable housing and HOA are absolutely, don't go together. If you have affordable housing, and HOA is going to make sure that these people have to cut their grass all the time, they may not be able to afford a lawnmower, have to bear to afford the houses. HOA and affordable housing are like oil and wine.
I think he does a lot of this, and he might not speak more.
I have a couple of projects in the Temple area, and they are on the beginner price point of homes for people, in the higher two hundreds, low three hundreds. And we have HOAs, and the HOAs do a good job of managing them. Now, one of the things that, in one of the town and communities that we're putting in, we're having the HOA be responsible for everything up to the building. And so, if there's any grass, the HOA maintains it all. And that's something that we could very well look at for here.
So, you say affordable housing to you is two hundred to three hundred thousand dollars?
No.
That's...
No, with that note, in this particular community that we're at over there, that is the price point.
Let's talk here.
Yes, sir.
So affordable housing here, and then HOA fees tacked on to the top of the monthly mortgage payment, taxes and insurance. And now you're saying that the HOA would then is going to mow everybody's grass in there yet?
No, well, we don't know. What I'm saying is that, you know, we could take a look at something like that, because it's worked in other communities. I'm not talking about all the houses, I'm talking about maybe the townhome area. Because those, most of the people that want to move into a townhome want less of the footprint. Or maybe they're a little bit older and can't maintain. Or they're a young married couple that, you know, just wants something small, don't want...
And what area of Temple, what area of Temple are we talking about? The east side of the loop over there, is that you?
Over there behind, I'm over there behind Tracker Supply on McFroy. I was on Old Wake Road, and we finished up that subdivision. And then there's one about two miles behind us, Galloway. And then I've got the one behind Target in Temple, that's just us.
The change from the current zoning, where you have a bunch of a lot of SF six, eight, and tens, to going to predominantly, what, sixes and eights, is that, why so many more houses? Is this a financial grab from your guys' standpoint? Or are you just trying to jam houses into an area?
No, honestly, to make sense of the purchase and the development, dollars that are going to go in there, we have to be able to sell, you know, so many lots to make it make sense for us. And then the bigger lots...
One second, can I pause you there for a second? See, we approved the zoning after y'all paid your purchase price. But then the market kind of shifted. So basically, you're asking the city of Lampassus to shoulder a problem with the business and then jam these houses in there, when the city doesn't want them, and there's people here that don't want them. They hadn't gone to the schools and talked to anyone. And there's drainage issues that might get fixed. How is this viable for our community? Why is this, why are y'all a good fit? Why is this a good fit for Lampassus?
And that's the questions that we have to answer.
Fair enough, yeah. I guess that's the next step then, and we'll go back to the school, and we'll try to, you know, come back over and re-address it with y'all.
Talking about supporting growth, like most of the citizens have said. We know that there needs to be housing. Affordable housing is great, too. But we agreed and approved the zoning. And then really, the heart of the matter, as you just said, is we need to justify the purchase by putting what you're trying to put in there. Unfortunately, that's not our problem. If it doesn't work for this community, then we can't get behind it.
I understand.
Is there any way we can put up page forty-six on the TVs? Is this an example of one of your subdivisions you've done?
That's one of the, one of our developers has done that.
One of your, but not this particular developer?
But yeah, they are townhomes as well.
Okay. Now, I understand what we've been given is not a drainage plan. But what I'm seeing is, on a property line, you've got a detention pond marked. I'm curious, where's the outflow for that?
So, I mean, you're taking on the new plan, or?
Yeah, if we can go to page thirty-three, Monica.
You're taking about the big avenue or the smaller one out here?
The smaller one, right on the property line, about the middle of the page, halfway up.
So that's where water naturally flows to Mr. Richardson's property.
So where's the, where's the outflow of that detention?
The outflow would be onto his.
Onto his property?
Where it naturally flows, so we can outlet where water naturally goes.
But when you're adding this many roofs, is there naturally that much water that goes that way?
So naturally, actually, the whole offsite really does go through the Richardson property. There's a whole bunch of offsite that comes through the property.
But it's covered by the soil woods here, right? It's not impervious.
Right, right, well, I mean, yeah, but naturally, all of that goes through the Richardson property. We're actually taking most of that offsite, taking it to the detention ponds, to the big ag space up there, and throwing that into Sulfur Creek. And then it's going to be less of a footprint that actually goes to the Richardson property than what's existing.
So you're saying the retention pond goes from the big light blue area that Mr. Hernandez is talking about?
It's a detention pond.
But if it flows to the right, away from the road, away from the houses, why would you need a retention pond in the first place, if it's already flowing away from? Huh?
Detention out there.
Why would we need that?
Are you saying, why do we need the small pond down there? We actually don't know if we need it right now, we're going to do the full analysis. Back in the day, we saved some spot, just in case. Possibly.
Chief Davis, and please, are we concerned at all with just two avenues of ingress, ingress? You had a lot, a lot of houses for just two in and two out. Are we concerned with that at all, two chiefs? Chief, please, chief fire.
Council, I won't pretend to know numbers and details and all of that. That's a little, well, what I give with something like this, right? But I'm certainly be concerned to know someone with an expert on how big roads need to be, turning houses, and projected number of cars, and all of that. I think that's very important to know, please, and fire side. Same with the fire side, we have to run that through the fire marshal and do what is planning as far as the width of the streets and the aggressiveness, aggressiveness.
Okay. That's a question needs to be answered, too.
In most cities, it's usually two entrances, you can get up to three hundred lots off of two entrances with the subdivision. So I'm not sure exactly what Lampassus is.
I know that one entrance overall, Mill Street, that's a pretty small area right there. It's a, a high traffic over there and congestion already, like without, it was okay.
What's the drainage infrastructure look like that y'all plan on doing? Is it underground or is it surface?
I mean, we plan on, it just depends on what it looks like, but we plan on doing it underground, but if we can't get the. The amount of like elevation is going to work, then we might have to do things, which is probably varies, but that'll be concrete in the design.
Because that's below the treatment plan, isn't it?
Yes, sir, we're lower than that.
Got to look at that, lift stations and how, I mean, to get it there.
Yes, yes, sir, yeah. And that's what, I don't have that forward ahead, but actually, infrastructure wise, we've, we've met with Jones Zero, and they've done some analysis. They assured us that they can supply, we, we have to do a little bit of upgrades offsite, and they assured us they can supply water to our site. They have, they have the analysis from them, uh, and sewer, they told us we got to put the lift station in, but there should be plenty of room in the sewers thing. So Jones Zero has already confirmed all that with us.
All right, any other questions? Thank you.
Two point one, discussion possible action concerning approval of minutes of the regular meeting held on December ninth, twenty twenty-four.
Any, any favor from approval?
Any discussion? All in favor? Consent agenda? Discussion possible action regarding purchase and charges in excess of four thousand dollars from December first, twenty twenty-four to December the thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. Discussion possible action regarding November twenty twenty-four investment report.
Recommend approval of consent agenda.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Say. Board and department reports.
Good evening, Council. I'll be very brief this evening. As, uh, as I present the water, wastewater annual report, and I'll pass it on to Wayne and Carlos. The group of, if that's us, we are, uh, public superior water system. Individual pictures of us, um, what you notice here is we have four individuals with over twelve years' experience. We have two guys that are in, in intermediate, six or eight. And then we have a really, really strong core group of Anthony, Glenn, Jacob, and our new hire, Cyrus Coleman. Um, with the three years there. Glenn brings five years' experience from Bertram, working in water. Jacob Yoho brings eight years' experience working at Texas A and M in water and wastewater field. And Anthony is very mechanically inclined. Uh, this is, this is where the, the future is for City of Lampassus Water and Wastewater Department, right here. Great group of guys I have. All right, um, just touching on a little budget. The Water Wastewater Department is built up of three budgets. You have the water distribution side, you have your wastewater collection side, and you have your wastewater treatment plant. On the annual budget for the water, a little over three and a half million dollars. Uh, with the majority of that.
Uh, supporting buildings and grounds, uh, water tank maintenance, our heavy equipment, our SCADA system. Vehicles, meter replacements and purchases, and water system, uh, install water lines, fire hydrants, repairs of water lines and fire hydrants. Uh, also, that goes along with the Kipner tank and line maintenance, which has been used quite a bit lately. And travel and training to keep our required licenses and memberships and dues for, uh, members of our TCQ'd, TWA, AWWA memberships. On the wastewater collection side, the six hundred thousand dollar budget, and it pretty much goes along the same lines as the water budget. Uh, maintaining equipment, vehicles, lift stations, pumps, grounds around your lift stations, uh, travel and training and membership dues. Um, one of the major assets of this is your capital improvement. Uh, this year, uh, have a budgeted of a hundred thousand dollars and plans on using every penny of that for a lift station upgrade. One too many, and then your sewer plant budget, a little over a million dollars. Um, some of the talk this evening is whether the wastewater plant could handle a subdivision of the size being proposed, and yes, it can. Um, there are some upgrades and some studies that we would like to have done to make sure, but the capacity is there for sure. Um, no major capital improvements over the last year. Um, with a, uh, capital improvement of a little over fifty thousand dollars going toward this year. Uh, mainly towards the, uh, emergency electrical, uh, generators, sorry. So major projects that we have completed over the twenty-three, twenty-four budget years. Uh, installed a fire line on the north side of the square. We installed a fire line on the west side of the square. Have a sewer line extension on Avenue G. And we have began our EPA mandated and regulated lead service line inventory. Have water line looping on Live Oak, a water line looping on Samick Trail. And of course, uh, water relocations during the two eighty-one highway project. And we installed an online pH meter for the Afnah Treatment Plant. And of course, we have on, uh, ongoing GIS data collection for the water and wastewater infrastructure. And so some proposed projects for the twenty-four, twenty-five budget is the onsite power generation at the wastewater treatment plant. Uh, and Spring Street Pump Station, water line looping on Avenue C and water line looping on Avenue A, along with water line looping on Second Street. We have a proposed sewer line extension on Barnes that will extend past the county jail to Highway one eighty-three. We have several citizens out there requesting this, their septic tanks are starting to fail. And there's some, uh, building that, uh, some folks have reached out to expand and start adding homes out there. Same for Skipshaw Lane, um, failing septic systems in that area. And of course, more GIS collection of our wastewater systems. Work orders through the year. Uh, one of our more timely duties is line locates, and as much construction is going on around with the two eighty-one project and the new. Uh, gas project in town, along with Second Street, street rebuilds, we had five hundred and nineteen line locates. We had seventy-three water leaks, that doesn't include the seventy-three water leaks that Kipner had. Had two hundred and fourteen line flushes. Had thirty-nine sewer backups, thirteen new water taps, had eleven meter change outs, two new sewer taps, and ninety-eight miscellaneous work orders. And those usually contain somebody calling in with no water or low pressure or dirty water, uh, due to main breaks or things like that. And I will turn it over.
Ben, if you could.
Of course, of course, questions, questions.
A couple of questions here. Um, first of all, I want to say thank you, Mr. Sims, for you, to you and as leader and, and your team, uh, for taking care of us on this wastewater. I wanted to ask a question, what with, what, where is our capacity right now on a percentage standpoint of, of where we're at? Uh, I, I mean, I've heard all kinds of things, up to ninety percent, eighty percent.
Okay, so.
Of, of wastewater.
On the, on the wastewater side. You have two different capacities. You have hydraulic, which is the water, and you have biological, which is the solids in the plant. Hydraulically, we're around thirty to forty percent. Plenty of room for water. The biology, the solids in the plant, we're pushing eighty-five, ninety percent. We have an EPA grant of a little over a million dollars, and we are in the middle of applying for that and getting all the paperwork off to the EPA for approval. But it's pretty much, it is, it is approved, and we are going to use that to put in a brand-new belt press, which is going to help reduce the solid on that plant greatly.
And there's, there's a lot of the, the solid, um, capacity there, or we're, we're at up to, you said eighty-five percent or so, a lot of that coming, or a lot of that load coming from Afnah?
A lot of it is industrial, yes, sir.
But if you had to kind of put a number to it, what, what would you say?
They're only a third of our flow, but they're two-thirds of our solids.
So you're going to be forty, fifty percent?
Forty to fifty percent of.
Of the, of your solids?
They are, yes.
Okay. But that belt press will help with that, or belt press will help something with that?
Yes.
Okay.
Right now, we have a, a nineties model, it's a French, or I'm sorry, it's an Italian model that's no longer made. Uh, we are lucky enough to have found a group out of Houston that can remanufacture the parts. So anytime something breaks on it, we call them and they have to actually build it. So that, and we're, it's actually down right now, uh, it'll be down for about six weeks. Because when they got here to fix everything, there was, they found something that was broke that they weren't ready to build. So they had to go back to the shop, take that part with them, get all the computer diameters and stuff like that, and actually build it on site and bring it back and replace it.
Got you, thank you.
Can, can you go to page two?
Page?
Ben? Ben, why are you the one without a hat on?
At one point, I was proud of my hair.
I was wondering, wondering why you weren't hugging somebody.
That's why I fast forwarded that real quick. I have a, I have a great group of guys, and I'm going to tell you that there is a brotherly love between that group. Um, I wish I was their age, that's for sure, there's a lot of energy down there. Just curious. Thank you.
Page two. Now, for the rest of the story.
Wayne, you're up next.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. So I have your annual report for the electric department, and our mission is to provide citizens of Lampassus with a safe and reliable power at affordable price. We shout, we rock with our service, think we did a good job there. Continue, continue to grow, and to take out and train. Here's my crew of seven, Thomas, Kyle, John, and then our Mac, K, Eddie, Mike, and myself. Ten year, Mike has got ten years, Dave's been with us two, Thomas seven, Kyle five, John just started, and Mike just started. Certifications, I have footprints. Uh, then Mike, the, the new hire, he's, uh, introduced it very before he starts his apprenticeship, and then the rest of us are certified. We have annual budget of fourteen million, four hundred and eighty-two thousand, one hundred and thirty-seven dollars. And out of that, I get to work with four hundred and nine thousand, five hundred dollars. That's pretty close to last year's four hundred and eight thousand, five hundred. With that, uh, salary, equipment, needed replacements, transformers, training, memberships, and our state. Some of our projects, and most of these projects you didn't see last year as far as upcoming projects, they were just kind of thrown on as a roll of punches as it comes in. So some of them, we put in, uh, some air switches at the substation to be able to isolate the breakers. We, uh, continue building out of hillside acres, we have to probably back these seventy-five percent built out. Uh, built the line out at the business park, we've, uh, been doing pole inspections and, uh, replacements and tagging. We have tree trimmers come in, we do a lot of tree trimming, too, I've been doing a better job at accounting for the hours that we put in. Tree trimming, and you'll see a more accurate account of that on the month season as they come through, so you can get a feel of how much time we spend there. Uh, we relocated, uh, a lot of the underground and the transformer in Brook Park because of the road construction out there, kind of just tore all our stuff out and drove off and pulled up. It's like we've got a job to do here. We assisted Monica with the cameras, and we have a couple more projects coming up that, within the next month or so, though. Three phase line extensions, we have to build, and, uh, Boise South Key, Arrow, we got three phase two, coffee shop hole, we're building anyway. And, uh, we, we rebuilt the star at the courthouse, it was, it was in bad shape, we had to jump through loops and find new sockets and everything, get up there and get that working for. Lots this year, but that was a challenge at the time, but what I thought would have been common material. Uh, upcoming projects is, uh, pole replacements and inspection, tree field lighting that you improve for us, it's going to be a pretty big project, that's going to take us a good amount. Uh, we got a study coming up with Alsera that we're, uh, going to be starting this next year, they're going to help us determine as far as, uh, subdivisions and new wells, and what can hassle in what areas. Will need improvement in the, if they'll build over here or over there, that's a pretty good idea, but we need some engineers. Cover this on that, and bolt that, and that, or whatever. Not on there, but we have the line relocation out here on, uh, one ninety west, take side for the. The road works, it's going, going out there, they've seen I've got to move the power line over out there, so it's going to be done by the end of this year. Let that off. And work orders, yeah, yeah. Line locates, we got a lot of them, five hundred and sixteen, we can see in a whole lot more, and, uh, and your guys will be seeing a whole lot more locates too. Uh, Admosis coming to town, and they're fixing to replace a lot of lines. Little generate a lot of headaches for our stuff. We did, uh, twenty-two pole change outs, we set seven, seven new poles, uh, of course, uh, service upgrades, forty-one. And that's kind of a thing that when we show up, we plan our day. and then electrician's doing that, and we get a follow-up, we have to drop what we're doing, and go very quickly. Service, and there's any of us, and responding to testing, but we did a lot of that. We planned our workday, and we planned on some of the others. Uh, new services, about thirty new homes, connected, uh, twenty-six camps. Street lights are up, we got a hundred that changed up this year, and I have a hundred on order that we're changing a lot right now. And we've got to pay for overtime calls for the year. Have any questions?
Any questions? I just had one question. You know, any, any talk of, or actually, I've heard talk of doing some underground, running our electric lines underground for any type of new subdivision or that type of thing. Wayne, what's your thought on that?
Definitely frozen constant, uh, in a dense neighborhood, I believe underground would be good. It's like, uh, we don't want to be building on backlot lines and get fenced in where we can't access stuff. If a developer come in, puts something in, and put the underground conduits and stuff in, if it was designed, or we just pulled wire, and ordered the transformer and stuff, we'd be, it would be a nice-looking system and working and be reliable, and we'd cost more.
But it, as far as the maintenance on it, you're a whole lot less on maintenance on an underground line than you are overhead, is that?
You won't be dealing with trees.
Yes.
We'll be dealing with squirrels. A lot of those, we four have, we're dealing with squirrels. It's not, it's not something that you can use for the backbone of the system, you power across town and stuff. But the areas would be good. You have to plan these things out. Transformers are hard to get. I think, here's a, here's a good example. I actually got dates on this. So September of twenty-three, I ordered a transformer for Able Gym. I was, they got pushed off, it was at seventy-two to eighty weeks in. I got a call here a while back. And, uh, as I was checking, I was like, where did that happen? When that year? And they pushed it out to July of this year. So twenty-three, all of twenty-four, I was supposed to got it in November. And they pushed it out to July of this year. So I turned around, the one was a different company. Found one, there'll be one here in two weeks, take care of this customer. And I have the other one coming on for backup, but it's like, or subdivision coming in, these are going to have land, you know, materials in it to be purchased. There's going to be a wait time, so everything we figured out and up front, I mean, we're going to have builders sitting there waiting, or?
No.
Well, enough to get insurance built up. There's frozen constant, fifty, we're working a lot of places.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Mr. Carlos.
Evening, council, mayor.
Uh, mine's not as interesting as theirs. So. So we provide safety, connectivity, mobility, maintaining, improving city on streets, right-of-way drainage, safety, welfare of citizens, and general public at the highest priority. There's our team. There's four of us that get over, got over ten years. Uh, I got two that are coming up. I don't know how much longer they'll be with us. I've had several talks with them, and they're, I think they're talking, as soon as they hit their twenty, they're out the door. So, but hopefully, they can stay a little bit longer. So. And then I got three that are from six years, and we just hired a new one January sixth. So here lately, I had two guys that would have had six years, but they all chase solar panels and all that going on over the country. And I had a job opening for at least a year before I could fill it up, and that's that one-year employee that I have there. So it's hard for me to fill positions. With, uh, what we have with, you know, they can go down the road and make a little bit more money, but that's, uh, answering questions for later on, later on in the budget year. Certifications, we don't have as many. Uh, we got, we all have to carry Class B CDL. There's five of us. One of them actually got a permit here the other day. But with the CDL standards, federal CDL standards, they can't go down here and test and go sign up to go to Georgetown or whatever and get a CDL. Now it's a federal program. And the city of Lampassus actually happens to have two certified trainers. So if we didn't have the certified trainers, it would cost my, my department and the city six thousand dollars just to send one guy to go get CDL trained. But we have two of them in the city. Actually, three of them. Uh, you got one in the electric department, and you got me, then you got one in the water department that can do CDL training. So that saves lots of money if we hire somebody with that at CDL. And I'll have, uh, the new guy starting to study and take his test. Every three years, we have WorkZone Traffic Control flagging certification. Um, and that, that is called upon us more than what we want. You get something on one of these major highways, we have to go flag. Uh, we help the water department, we help the electric department on the side streets flag, so that's a certification that we get every three years.
And the luxury about that is, it's no cost to the city. We get hold of Arlington U.T. They come down here, and they'll give us a two-day class, and it's no cost, and we get certified. My budget's one point four five three, two hundred and eighty-four million. And with that budget, the equipment, free travel training, membership dues. Uh, as far as, um, I'm talking about building ground street projects for shepala drainage projects. And every day, something always comes over, drainage truck, city, I gotta go visit, but, uh, we just tell them, we'll put you on the list. That's all we can do. Street projects, twenty-three, twenty-four, we seal coated all point six five miles, brush chipping. We did twenty-five tons. Current retaining wall installed at the, for fence and skate park. Uh, that's between, uh, Rick Harden's place and, uh, what's in the choir. Uh, IP drainage, uh, the water was getting the building coming off, building here, so we put a drainage system. Seems to be working. I haven't got a call from Monica about it, so we're good. Uh, Western Street Culver, uh, that was an emergency project that we had to get done. It is one hundred percent complete. I have it walkthrough scheduled with the contractor soon. There's a couple of little items that we're going to get addressed, and other than that, the road's wide open, way to go. So it actually looks pretty nice, and they did a good job. Second street rebuild. The first part, before we come back, you got a change order, the first part, if I'm going to say, it's at ninety, ninety percent. But now we're down there putting the drainage pot by the Windsor Building, and they're moving along pretty good. Uh, top, we got another big number from the contractor. They hope to be out of here by mid-February. And I know that we have them through contract states by the end of March. So they hope to get out of here sooner than that. So random weather. Street projects for twenty twenty-four, twenty-five, Cooper Springs parking lot, crap for drainage. Uh, that's a study that we've had going on for a couple of years. Joint Zero has that one, I think. Uh, Third Street Bridge Project, Tech Dot funded, it's actually underway. So if you try going that way, you can't cross, and you'll fall into the hole. The bridge is completely gone today. So that collapsed today. Uh, Campbell Parking Lot, additional parking, that's right there where the state park's at. Taming maintenance program, extra potholes, you know, uh, water department goes and cuts the road, puts in water lines and all for all these houses, we've come to hide them and fix them. Uh, MNU actual water crossing repair. So that's been repaired, but we're in the process through going through, getting a grant through FEMA, to get that repaired back to not the original state, but back to where it was. Uh, because if we have another flood come through, it's just going to wash out again. So the only reason we're getting that is because we had a rain back in last May, or whenever that was, and washed that road out. And the city's eligible to get seventy-five percent funding for that. And we'd be allowed over twenty-five percent if we get approved. And we're in the stages of talking with them at the moment. Work orders this year, twenty twenty-four is wrong. I would leave it at that, but rather than call me out on that. I think total was a hundred and seven, hundred and seventy-seven total work orders that we did this year. And that, like I said, that runs from street repair, tree trimming, potholes, street signs, street sweeping, drainage. Assist selection. So we have that down there, and I'll pop it there and show her what's going on down there. We got several, I made several suggestions that will bring to you all this stuff. Elizabeth Reed, she's been with us for nine months. She's a great hand, she's like a keeper. Revenue budget for twenty-four, twenty-five was thirty-seven thousand, four hundred. Revenue budget twenty-three, twenty-four was thirty-one, thirty-one thousand, seven thirty-eight. The collection station is up, I mean, there's the charges and all that. Uh, we offer CDN County, uh, recycle center, so we charge the county residents thirty-six dollars a year to come recycle. And, uh, that helps offset some of the costs. Uh, your hall charges and all that from twenty-three, twenty-four, I would say there. Total punch collected, give you a comparison. And twenty-four is two hundred and sixty-eight. Uh, people have found us. We got lots of people moving to town, we're meeting lots of people. And they're glad we have a recycle center. And the only comments I get from when I, when I have to fill in, or I'm down there, it's almost negative. That if we can have that thing open full-time, it sure will help a lot of people. My answer is, it's in the works. We're trying to come up with something to make sure that it's feasible for everybody, and it works on everybody's skin. Any questions?
Carlos and, uh, Wayne, I told Ben, thank you. I want to thank you on behalf of our council here for you and your team, and all the guys that are working diligently hard for the city. I want to say thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you. And another thing, Robin Black has made a big exit to the public works. If it wasn't for her, I don't think I'd got this completed.
City Manager's Operational Report.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Uh, just a few updates from inside City Hall. We did interview two candidates for the Assistant City Manager position. However, we decided not to fill that at this time. I'm kind of taking a step back and analyzing what the needs of the city are. I feel like a Public Works Director would be a better fit for what we're needing at this time. So I'm not looking to fill the ACM role. I did, uh, have Vicky send out an internal posting today for a Public Works Director position, and we plan on getting that on TML's website, and in the newspaper and online on Friday. So if you know any qualified candidates for a Public Works Director, we are in the market. Um, we did, uh, Carlos and I, he spoke to it a little bit, but we attended a pre-construction meeting for the Third Street Bridge Replacement Project on January second, and found out they would start setting out barricades the next day. So we're hoping to communicate a little bit better with Tech Dot. They started the road closure that following Monday. We did ask them to keep it open over the weekend, so we had seventy-two hours to push that information out. They are on that job about ninety-nine days, so we expect Third Street to be closed through the middle of June. Not really expecting many delays. They have gotten straight to work on it, so, uh, they've got a good plan out there. Just wanted to bring to your attention, uh, when I met with the city council members on my hire, a lot of council members requested a complete analysis of the expenditures associated with the business park from its inception to date. I pretty much have that analysis complete, so I'm going to leave that in council's hands. If they want to set a joint meeting with the EDC Board, if we want to address that in a council meeting, I'll totally leave that up to you guys on how you want to roll that information out. The Airport Advisory Board has met two months in a row. The pilots are really excited. Um, and they have approved some options for the airports, ALP, that will be submitted to the FAA for approval. It's a guiding document. It's not intended to commit the city to any of the projects that identified in the plan. But when we go to FAA for approval, uh, as we hopefully expand the operations of the airport, they'll look to see if that's on our ALP and say, perfect, you've got the go-ahead there. So again, no commitments, but it just kind of gives us a visualization of what, what the pilots, not the Pilots Association, but the Airport Advisory Board wants to see happen out there, and what staff can do to get that moving forward. Um, contractors for the fuel tank replacement are on-site this week to get that switched out, so that we can start selling fuel to, uh, our pilots again. So we're really excited about that. And, um, we've identified various other projects with the Airport Advisory Board that, uh, we can get done pretty quickly. They've been great, and, um, they're gonna, they, they made a motion at their meeting on Saturday to provide a flight tracking software system out there. I need to get with Monica, make sure we still got good internet out there, but the Pilots Association is donating that so we can start tracking our operations to really prove up those improvements at the airport in the future. So we're excited about that. And just a reminder, that Wednesday is the first day to file to run for city council or for the mayor's seat. There are five positions on the ballot this year, and the final day for submission is February fourteenth. Happy Valentine's Day. Uh, so don't forget to pick up your packets if you're intending to run again. Any questions?
And, uh, in regards to the business park, I, we had talked previously about having joint sessions with council and, uh, the EDC Board.
Yes, sir.
I think now would be a good time to go ahead and try and schedule something.
Okay. Next week, or?
I think next week. Yeah, they meet, or, since I'm on board, we meet tomorrow. So I think it'd be appropriate, if y'all are interested, try and meet next week. Wednesday's a good day for me. Yep.
Wednesday.
I like Wednesday.
Yeah, Wednesday's good.
So we'll schedule a joint meeting with EDC next Wednesday at five-thirty?
Yes.
Sounds good.
Okay, perfect.
Seven point one, discussion and possible action regarding a joint election agreement between Lampassus Independent School District and the City of Lampassus.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. To kind of go along with the first data file for place on ballot. It is the first thing that we do each year, is going to be the joint agreement with the school district. So we've been doing this since two thousand and seven, and the only thing that really changes is the dates. But this is something we have to do each year. Um, the school district cannot do their own by federal law, so we just do it as joint, and we share expenses, which works out for both parties. So at this time, I'm just asking for council consideration to approve the joint election agreement between Lampassus Independent School District and the City of Lampassus, and authorize the mayor to execute the related documents.
I make a motion to approve the joint election agreement between the Lampassus Independent School District and the City of Lampassus, to authorize the mayor, and authorize the mayor to execute the related documents.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Seven point two, discussion and selection of a website photo contest winner.
Mayor and City Council, we received three photo entries for the month of December.
I think I motioned on entry one.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Nay. I like three. This is Wayne's work, Wayne's work, the star.
Seven point three.
Mayor and Council, you may recall seeing something similar.
Mayor and Council, you may recall seeing something similar in the past, uh, what this is, is a resolution to deny Atmos gas rate increase request to the Railroad Commission. Um, essentially, there's a coalition of cities that comes together, um, Atmos has requested an increase in their rate that is paid by the customers in, in the City of Lampasas and across the state. And so, as the coalition, each city is asked to pass a resolution supporting the denial of the rate increase um, as it is fought with the Texas Railroad Commission, which regulates natural gas in the state. Um, so we are simply asking for council to pass this resolution to support denying the rate increase by Atmos.
I make a motion to approve the resolution by the City of Lampasas denying the increase in rates proposed by Atmos Energy Corporation in its Mid-Tex Division filed on or about December sixteenth, twenty twenty-four, authorizing intervention in proceedings related to Atmos Energy's application to increase rates, authorizing special counsel to represent the city in matters related to Atmos Energy's proposed increase. Is that I?
I'll second.
One rates, directing Atmos to reimburse rate case expense, finding that the meeting complies with the Open Meetings Act, making other findings and provisions related to the subject and declaring ineffective date.
Second.
Okay, now I'll second.
That was a long one. They all did that to me.
Now you know what my problem is. We have a, we have a first and we have a second? Any discussion?
All in favor?
Aye.
Seven point four, and I'll let you read that.
So, Mayor and Council, this item was discussed during public hearing, so at this time, I'm asking to consider a motion to approve, deny, or approve with modifications the first reading of an ordinance to rezone Northern Creek Estates, commonly known as twelve oh six Mill Street and seventeen oh five East Fourth Street.
I make a motion to deny the rezoning.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion?
I would move to, uh, to amend, to refer the application back to planning and zoning for further study.
Let's finish this only first and second, and then we can do that one.
Okay, we have a first and a second?
Any, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Okay. So, that was, that failed.
I would move to refer the application back to planning and zoning for further study for a more viable option for neighbors out there and for the community. Second.
Any discussion?
I'm sorry, who's second?
Mayor, I think we need to clearly state out what we want planning and zoning to find out, you know, ingress egress, uh, flood planning, water runoff, all of that. I think there's gotta be a clear, uh, line items for them to, to find out, to report back.
Never got an answer on why it's good for our town. Need to know.
Could be another one.
And I would like to hopefully see an approval or a denial from planning and zoning, that's why we have them, so that they can refer.
Yeah, and I, I'd like to
So, just
meet as a full board and actually
Sure.
make a decision.
Yeah, and, and so I will put this back as a motion for you to have some viable options back to the developer and totally to present it back to the Planning Commission, however, with the pieces that you were referring to, that's part of the civil plan review as well, that'll come after the zoning piece, so we kinda have to break that up because we won't get it all at one time, a set of plans. Um, so normally we'll get the zoning first and then they'll go back and they'll do the civil piece and that's when we go back through and look at the drainage and the infrastructure, what needs to happen, before we do the prelim for the plats and the plat approvals. So, all that'll be included in that, the size of the roads, egress, ingress, all that.
Same with, and, and, and water and wastewater also, that'll be after?
Yes.
I think that factors in with the number of houses, so that's planning and zoning, which does affect the civil. So, if they're wanting, I mean, we're, we're kinda saying to both sides here at the same time in that we're wanting planning and zoning to approve it or go through it with a fine tooth comb, but at the same time, we do not wanna add additional problems for our neighbors, so we want the, the housing, it's just not the problems that come with it that could pose a, a threat to our, our good neighbors that are right around them.
Absolutely, but we'll just do the zoning piece though, because the, the zoning
Yes, that plays into the civil.
Yes.
Well, I mean, and, and I would just like to say this as part of the discussion, I mean, personally, as it stands with the, with proposed zoning, I would, I'm with you, not for that, would vote it down in a heartbeat, but if we have an opportunity to do a little bit more research right now on expansion down the road, now'd be a good time to do it, and who knows, maybe, maybe something will work out, but the way it stands right now, no.
So. I agree, I do think that's something that we need, I just don't think we need this.
Correct, right. Absolutely.
Can you restate your motion?
Any more question?
Can you restate your motion, I can't, I don't remember the wordage.
It was to refer the application back to planning and zoning for further study. I'm not trying to kick it down the road either, just I know more.
And we had a second?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed.
I'm sorry, you were opposed? So, you were opposed to it going back to being renewed, okay.
Seven point five, discussion and consideration of an approval by resolution of Lampasas Economic Development Projects related to a life safety grant for improvements made to an existing commercial building located at four ten East Third Street.
Mayor and Council, uh, the LEDC Board approved a grant application for D and M T Investments LPs, Life Safety Grant Application at its May twenty twenty-four meeting. Um, that work has been completed and they did come back to the EDC for the reimbursement of some of those expenditures, they were approved up to twenty thousand dollars. We're just dotting some i's and crossing some t's here in that a project that exceeds ten thousand dollars in a municipality of less than twenty thousand people requires two readings of a resolution approving the project by city council.
I'd move to approve the first reading of a resolution for Lampastic Economic Development Corporation Life Safety Grant, the amount of twenty thousand dollars for D and M T Investments.
Second.
I'm gonna take Eric's second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Seven point six, discussion and possible actions to ratify allocation of a repair expenses for the fire department truck, ladder truck in the amount of thirty thousand dollars and seventy-four cents.
I'm standing in for Fire Chief Adams tonight. Uh, so during the fiscal year twenty-five budget, the city council, he asked me to, he didn't really, I told him I'd speak for him. He's here to answer questions just in case.
We got a lot of questions.
During the fiscal year twenty-five budget cycle, the city council approved a hundred and twenty thousand dollars to do, uh, improvements or rehab the ladder truck. Now that they've gotten a, a little further into the fire truck, they've discovered some additional repairs that need to be made to the tune of, um, just over thirty thousand dollars more than what was originally budgeted. Also, in the fiscal year twenty-five budget cycle, the, uh, council approved fifty-five thousand dollars for an SCBA refill station for the fire department. Um, Chief Adams has agreed that, he actually offered it up, um, they can delay the replacement of the SCBA machine. So, what we are asking for council is approval to reallocate thirty thousand dollars and seventy-four cents from the Capital Improvement Fund to the repair fund.
I make a motion to ratify the original budgeted amount for the fire department ladder truck rehab and approve additional funding in the amount of thirty thousand dollars and seventy-four cents.
I'll second.
Any questions?
Chief, is there any way you can go back, I understand that, um, what a, what a convenient time to find thirty thousand additional repairs. That turn, that turned, uh, the ladder turntable, the huge part of that truck, and I just, I think that company could've found that on the original diagnostic of the truck, is there any way we can go back to them and say, is there going to be anything else?
I've already done that to them, uh, the reason they found that was that ladder truck needed to be refurbished several years ago, so we never did work the ladder because it wouldn't pass state inspection, it wouldn't TCFP, uh, commission. So, they never started running it, so when they started refurbishing it, they started running that ladder and that's when we found that problem in the turntable. And it's actually the, uh, the turntable has all electronics, the electrical, the hydraulics, and the water, so that's why it's so expensive. I've already talked to them, it's the guys.
So, you don't anticipate any, and, and, I know stuff comes up, and it's, and we gotta pay for it to, to fix it, but you don't anticipate any more major?
No, not at all, in fact, I have an invoice, um, sitting on my desk for the estimated original. So, it's actually gonna be a little bit over that, but I don't
Think you could get them down to seventy-four cents?
That, that, it may be my bad.
All right, we have a motion and a second, anything else? All in favor?
Aye.
Seven point seven, discussion and possible action to consider quote from all seasons service to replace the unit at the library in amount of ten thousand seven hundred and fifty-five dollars.
Mayor and Council, right before the cold snap last week, the heating unit in the children's area of the library went out. And we did attempt to receive free quotes for the repair replacement, um, in accordance with our purchasing policy. We only received two quotes, a third of same from submitting one. The low bid was in the amount of ten thousand seven hundred and fifty-five dollars. Since obviously this is not a budgeted expense, we are proposing taking that ten thousand seven hundred and fifty-five dollars from the remaining of the SCBA fire, uh, fill station for the fire department to transfer to the library to replace that unit.
I move to approve the quote from all seasons in amount of ten thousand seven hundred and fifty-five dollars to replace the unit at Lampasas.
So, first and a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And I make, make, can I get a motion to adjourn? Is there any discussion? Okay, we will adjourn the council meeting, thank you guys.